We'll call this meeting to a halt. This is a continuation meeting of our last meeting. We continued the meeting for a couple of persons. We had been informed that we needed to do, by our county manager and by attorney, that we had to do two. Can you all hear me okay? Can you hear me now? We need to have two public hearings. So that was the purpose for the continuation. We did have a couple of other items that we didn't have up through this. It would be a pretty short meeting. The first thing is, we were informed by Chester appropriately that we, anytime there's any financing involved, anything with a government entity, we didn't have to have a public hearing with regards to that aspect of the project. And so, at this point, I will call the hearing to order. I'll call the financing of the Parker-Vettus recreation project. We'll call it hearing to order. And I'm going to ask Chester if he would just sort of explain, well, he explained it to me, and he can explain it better than I can. So Chester.
Hey, I'll do so. And I'll list the health assistance and lowerings. He probably doesn't think so. In case we have something that he needs help assistance with. The financing that is contemplated for this project is the sum of $1,800,000. That sum is to be borrowed on a 10-year term. And the, are they going to be semi-annual payments? Is what semi-annual payments contemplated. And the loan would be a first lien security interest in the 48-acre parcel of land that the county purchased in the Cartupia area of Macon County where the park will actually be located. If you'll recall, about this time last year, Macon County purchased from Will Creek Motor Coach Estates LLC by deed dated April 30th, 2013. This 48 acres plus or minus by deed recorded in Book P-35 at pages 850 to 862 as reported in the Office of Register D for Macon County, North Carolina. And again, the financing, the GS 168-20 financing, and the cause that involves real property. So we are required to hold a public hearing and disclose the terms that I've just disclosed and give members of the public an opportunity to ask questions about the proposed conference. Okay? So I think it'd be appropriate at this time to open it up to the public hearing, to the public, and begin conference.
All right. Laurie, do you have any other comments you have? Thank you, Chester. I think I share it as the list. Is there, we've got two names on here, Chuck Norton and Ryan Ravy. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? We can certainly add your name to the list. All right. Mr. Chuck Norton is here. And he has said his name.
No worries. Thank you guys for allowing me to speak Rivers to Parker-Vettus Park. I'm very involved in Little Lake Baseball. I think it's very important. Fields, there's always concerns, especially when it's raining like it is today. We thought the games would be canceled tonight, but they're on. We had a bunch of kids coming tonight to show support, but they actually are having games. I'm going to umpire one in just a few minutes. And we, just a little note, last night, we had some kids come from Highlands last night, played ball until 20 minutes till 10:00. Didn't have to travel back to Highlands, and one of them lives near the Georgia line on 28th. So I'd say it was 10:30, maybe 11 o'clock before they got home. But just, I'm here to ask support for this. It's something that's needed. I went to Ballpark five days a week, six days sometimes, four and five hours at a time. And it's something needed. We've got kids, multiple parents, that's having to shift back and forth. They've got kids playing at Conductor Park, they've got kids playing at Little Lake Field. It's a tough deal. I know money's tight, and I, but if it wasn't needed, I wouldn't be here for that. And I thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Comments? Next, we have Mr. Ryan Ravy.
I appreciate the chance to be here. I guess my contribution has, number one, being the first baseball coach at the high school and a teacher at the high school, obviously it goes without saying, this is a huge asset to our program. But more so, being a father of two young children, I say the fact that you guys have allowed us to have more choices in raising our children, giving them choices, positive choices, and I can't say enough for that. You know, I, one comment, I guess the first meeting you guys had at the rec park to allow public comment and stuff, right things, I wrote a very simple comment on there, and I'll stand by that, is we're investing in our children, how can that be wrong? And so, that's basically it. Anybody that knows me knows that I don't talk a lot, so that's about all I have.
Thanks, Ryan. I appreciate your comments.
Mr. Chair, if I would add one thing, we are hoping for an interest rate in the area of 2.5%. What we're hoping, you anticipated 2.5%, actually, you know, so we're actually thinking if they come in or what else that we have to make.
That would be good. Anything else you want to say in the hearing, Chester?
I think so. I think we just need to make sure anybody that would like to speak to be issued here the opportunity.
Again, anybody else that's here that would like to speak, the financing of Parker-Vettus. The board is over. Yes, sir. Could you come up here? Tell us who you are. Chester, can I write his name on the back? Sir, we'd state your name for the record, and we'll get you on the list.
Carl Barkman.
You may go right ahead, Carl.
I don't have any children myself that are all raised, but our grandchildren, our grandson sitting there, he played baseball. And if we don't have a field where they can play and practice, then, you know, we just, they don't have anything to do with it. The children need a rec park where they can play and enjoy themselves. That's all I can say.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Before we... The hearing closes. Okay. The hearing closes. Thank you, folks, for being here very much. We, I don't think we're, it'll be on a future agenda to vote on accepting a particular interest rate and that kind of thing. I don't think we'll do that tonight.
I don't think the Finance Officer has written permission to make that up.
The next item we have, item number three. Before we go there, we can... The next item on the agenda is, you'll recall, in one of our past meetings, our tax office presented what they called a schedule of values. And what they explained, this is a schedule that helps guide the process of revaluation of our properties for all of us. And we have to have a public hearing on that. So Chester, I'll go ahead and call the hearing to order. We actually had no one sign up to speak for that, but we certainly had some...
Richard Liker, give him the opportunity to speak to the proposed schedule of values and what these people are covering. Just for the commission to see.
If you recall, last month, I emailed the board a copied schedule. If you just want to look at it, a printed copy, there it is. How many do we have? Do you need to double them?
No, I wish I had. That's all right.
We print like four or five for the office. We used to print much more, you know, in the time when we didn't have laptops, computers, and everything else. And most people access that through setting a home or at the library or something. So we don't really print that many anymore. What this does for briefing for the board and then, just put through there, it's got every detail, house construction, commercial construction, each quality, things that you can add to it, extra. You don't think about it when you think about a house, but when you're putting those things together, Mr. Bill is a contractor, and you do a spec sheet, there's a lot of things go into any type of construction, and we have to allow for that. One thing that's common right now that we've never used to see is barns or some other type of structure attached to a house. I mean, I actually have in the county houses that people can talk to their horses because as far as the house. I mean, you got to allow for that kind of stuff. So that's what this schedule does. It also gives you ranges of prices for everything there is, like a very basic barn that somebody makes on weekends out of used lumber, recycled lumber and all that, that'd be a low quality. But then I do have a barn that was built last year, it was $350,000. So you have to be able to adjust to anything on that. Also land and all that. The one, the other part of the schedule contains, and it's actually a separate one in the back of your computer disk you have, it's called a use value schedule. And that's, that's only used for two things, basically in Macon County, your agriculture and your timberland. We don't have a lot of horticulture, row crops like they have down east where they have fields and fields of peanuts and sweet potatoes big down east, things like that. So we group it all together. It's basically, you have a forest land or you grow in some type of crop, and crop could be hay for your cattle, pasture land for your cattle, and it's generic in that sense. With the, after this public hearing tonight, we will be back again at your May 13th meeting. And at that meeting, you'd have to have a motion to accept the schedule of values. And once you do that, then we're on a timeframe that we have to advertise for four consecutive weeks. So the weeks would be like May 16th, 21st, 28th, and June 4th. And then you'd have to leave at least seven days after the last time that the newspaper article runs, before the last day that people can appeal to Raleigh, which would be June 11th. So basically, after you adopt it, we run that first notice in the paper. Anyone in the county that has property or controls property, they can appeal to the Property Tax Commission that there's paying X, Y, and incorrect here data to support it. And what would happen is, the Property Tax Commission expediates that hearing, so we would probably be called down the next month and go through that because if, if you recall 1983, we had that done. And it held up in force for a good number of months. So that's the schedule. Basically, you know, what you have to do, not just listen to any public, and then on the next meeting date, you make a motion to accept the schedule, and we put it out there for the appeals to good Raleigh, if there are any.
So if any commissioner has a question about any of that, you guys should be able to read that thoroughly as you can and have, I'm sure Richard will be willing to make a review, talk or whatever, clarify anything before we bring that.
Do you have any questions? On your land descriptions, obviously you've got Lakefront, Creekfront, and here and there, we've got a branch over there. How do you qualify property with a branch?
You have to go back to the market ability of that type of property. And it used to be, back, Kenny, do you remember what year it was? We found it in Calhia, it was a little branch, and we couldn't figure out why in the world, I think it made it in 2003 or maybe '99, a little branch behind a house, and the house was selling double what we assumed things would sell for and things around it. So there's a little branch about this big behind it, and that added value. Well, now in the market, a branch is not that important. We are looking at if it's basically a wider body of water, being the Weyer Creek, Cartupia Creek, Calhia Creek, Middle Creek, something that's almost, and a lot of times, we look at one of the simple ways that things can support trout, you know, because that's usually bigger. Eagle branches now are, because the markets are soft, you can go buy a nice piece up out on Bigger Creek, so the branches were not really addressing that much because they're selling basically whatever acreage in that area. And see, that's what we have to do with everything, and views are the same way, especially up there where they did and even down here on the higher elevation. You could have a 360 view, which we may adjust, say 200% over average land because it's worth, say, $150,000. Well, you could have a lesser view, but you've got a lot of property that's got lesser views now that maybe you only sell them for $50,000. So that's what, you know, we try to catch when we're out in the field and qualify how good some is, how bad some is. When the highway comes in, and I know they've done some projects around here, they cut off a piece of property. Now, your access to maybe 441 is not as good as it once was. Of course, you get compensated from the state, but we have to make certain, well, you know, right down the road, Ingalls got big wide access, and there's $100,000. Well, this man next door up the street don't have that type of access, even though it's on a commercial foreland. But then you have to reduce it. So you have a rural commercial being way down 441, that secondary commercial would be closer, primary would be your really hot spot. All that stuff's in this book. We don't always get it all right, but that's what the hearings are for, after the fact.
If you don't care just for my 233, my 211, too, the Machine React, the rules you have to work under as far as creating banks, and what the Machine React says and what must be done. Hope you get real clear.
Yeah, the Machine React is basically, it started way back in ancient times in North Carolina. It's been, it's updated every year. Every time there's a legislative session, there's some new law that's changed or added or done away with. And it basically tells you what we can tax, how we can tax it, you know, if certain things are getting partial taxes. It also tells you, things have to be at the highest and best use, there has to be that market condition. And that means on the length transition, because it actually gives you a definition. So a lot of, I know there's been a lot of questions about foreclosure, auction sales, everywhere in the country's had a lot. Different states address it differently, but more clients on a 100% market, so that means it's on length transaction, which means you're not under pressure to sell. So if somebody's selling a short sale or losing their property, or the bank takes it over, then that is not considered. However, you've got so many of those type sales happening, if I've got an identical piece of property 500 feet from something like that, and I can buy the other one for $50,000, I'm most likely not going to, because I have, you know, other obligations against that property. But we do look at that in, in an area of subdivisions. Wildflowers are a prime example. There's other ones. You know, they sold for a quarter million dollars, anything up there. Well, they're not, we lost about $90 million when we do the reappraisal on that subdivision because that's how bad, how fast and how far the values have gone down. So it does have an effect.
And this may not be the time to ask this question, but if you have a private appraiser that sets value on property using the current market standards, how do you factor that in? Or is that factored in? Is there a whole way you can derive tax value through your agency? Or can you use a private appraiser?
You can use a, now, Board of Equalization, which sat last week, and you know, we have three appraisers on there, Dwight Benson, Eric Drake, and Kevin Spivey. Then we've got a realtor and a large landowner. And Dwight Benson sits on the appraisal board for North Carolina. If I have an appraisal, and I bring it in, first off, it should be within six months of January 1, 2015. So it should not be January 1, say April 15th, we're having a field next year. If I have an appraisal from 2012, that's not acceptable. It should be within six months of January. The second part of that is, under appraisal foundation rules, if I do an appraisal, private appraisal for you, and it's made for inheritance, or it's made for a trust account, or you're a banker and I'm going in for the bank, and that appraisal can't be released unless I come in and sign off on it and say, yes, that appraisal can be used for public taxation purposes. So there are a lot of roles that we have no control over. What we do, we look at the appraisal, we look at the cons, we look at all the characteristics and try to get everything. We're not that hard, but the law is that you really can't use that appraisal unless it's made for tax purposes.
And you typically aren't going to see that appraisal utilized unless until the taxpayer is challenging the assessed value put on the property by the accessory. That's typically going to be before the Board of Equalization review, not in the process where we are right now. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what I... But it's on the field. I didn't take this for a form. But we do look at those when they come in, and, you know, we want, that's why in 30 years of being here, you know, we try to answer people's questions during that time. You know, a lot of them, we can do some, you know, we have to go all the way to Raleigh. But if we can get the stuff correct here at the local level, then we don't have to go to Raleigh, and that's where you're really getting the big money. But it's a process. Yeah, we'll try to cut down the ticks here with people. But now I'm telling you, there's a, there's a lot of property decreasing in value, so it's going to be totally different from the years in the past when everything went up. There's going to be, there's going to be winners and losers. I mean, this is the way it is.
Particularly if you're above 25% initially, or even lower. You said 25%.
Yeah, or even lower.
Lower.
In value, more. Basically, I said $2 billion loss, and it's probably, we won't know that until late this year, but it could be more than $2 billion loss.
And maybe just maybe more, like 30%.
Yeah, you just have a lot, Macon County has a lot of open land. You know, we've got a lot of parcels for this size county, especially this size county that's owned 50% by government and other exempt units. So what is something worth on the head of Telico now? I mean, not near as much as it was 10 years ago or anywhere else. Yeah. So I mean, I saw a track, well, in your neighborhood, I think there's a track out there, and it's got a good deal, got a really good deal, but they paid $1,200 an acre for it. Well, you know, 10 years ago, that's $20,000 an acre. So I mean, you figure, that's a much bigger decrease than 30% instead of the office they had in September. So I mean, you've got all those ranges. Anything else, board? I would appreciate it.
Okay. Can I come over? Anything else? Anything else? Or anybody else want to speak? We did not have anybody sign up. Yes, sir? I see that hand. I see that hand.
I just would like to make a comment. I came here...
And just state your name for the record.
Richard Nellman. I came here a couple of weeks ago and made some suggestions for you all. What is being proposed now is a schedule of values. I don't really have to go back. It is what it is, but it's cost to rebuild and handle and so forth. It's fixed. But some of the comments you gave to you is exactly what I've been talking about. If you go report that Board of Equalization review, you won't want to be commissioned. You've heard him say you've got to have an appraisal within six months, or they won't even listen to you. That's what I was telling people. They have an appraisal, maybe a year before or two years before. You don't have to be able to let the Board of Equalization give the weight that they want to today. They'll have to accept it at 100%. They might accept it 50%. It could also, what the property owner himself says, you can give your own valuation of property. You don't have to pay somebody to have an appraisal. It's more weight if you do, if you don't have to. So when you get to that manual, that's what's going to be important, because you've got to give the instructions to Kevin Benson and the other appraisers on there of what evidence they can listen to. What I tried to tell you was, I've seen cases over the years where people just turn away flat. We can't listen to you. We can't do it. So if you put something in that manual that allows you to do that, it's the two things that I said. Number one, you shouldn't, there's no rule of law that you have to have an appraisal. That's just law. It's just a rule that's in the manual that comes up in the law. That's not the law. Number two, the fix that we've been in here for the last eight years is, you have to have an appraisal that goes back to 2004, when I did the last, 2008, when I did the last appraisal. We don't have to make it flexible so that you can give weight of 75% if it's three years old, 80% if it's two years old, or something like that. That's what I was, I may not be able to come back up here and comment when that comes up. I'll try to keep it informed. If I don't, I'll have to keep that in mind, because taxes affect everything. My judgment, that's the single thing that you can do for the taxpayer, is give them a fair opportunity to be heard if they disagree with what they can be saying. That's what he said. He's talking about $100,000, $50,000, and so he gets here and there. There's no tax behind that. It's just an opinion. The taxpayers are right to invest.
And that's revealed in the tax manual.
I think that's in the tax manual, procedural part.
When is that?
No, that's illegal, what he's saying. I can't say all that for one... I've been to Raleigh on a court hearing on two cases, a famous man, what? And the taxpayer used a sale out before January 107, and he's demonstrating what it was after 107. And I was sitting in the commission, and I said, "Sell A." And he said, "What date was that sale?" I said, "February 1, 07." And the commission said, "Don't even talk about it. Don't even bring it up." Any sale after that...
Maybe county case? Macon County case?
And what was in the manual in 2000?
No. Well, that has nothing to do with it. That's a procedural law. Any sale after January 1, 07, if you bought something yesterday for $100,000, and I got $200,000 on it, you can't use your own purchase to sit back.
According to?
The state. The laws. It's in the court.
Taxes over 50 years, and I know it's nuts. But I've been to other disciplines, just to see it.
You can't use it. The cutoff date is January 1, the day of the cycle. So next year, January 1, 2015, if you bought property in March, you come to the Board of Equalization and say, "I paid $200,000 for this property, and you have $215,000 on it." That's not submittable by law. I'm sorry. I don't like that rule.
I'm saying get that written out in this law. The last time I was up here...
It's in the courts. It's already been decided, and that's what the courts have put back to the tax commission. You know, these are cases that they have already appealed, just like our Rainbow Springs case in 2003 that went all the way to North Carolina Supreme Court. That's a court case, and it's still court law today. So, and in that one, this... So, and, and that one, just to give you an example, they had a very large tract of land, four thousand acres. We valued it at five hundred dollars an acre back in two thousand and three, and Rainbow Springs appealed. We went to North Carolina Supreme Court, and our comps for that property was Carteret County, North Carolina, five hundred miles away. Main County won that because it supported the five hundred dollar bay. And that, that law, even though that, um, comps were not here, it set up highest and best use. Even though they had a conservation engine on it, it was only worth five hundred dollars an acre, we demonstrated it, and we won it. And that's the same thing, when these cases go through these channels, the tax commission, which is a court, then to the court of appeals, and then to the North Carolina Supreme Court, that sets the rules. And until you have another case over rolling them, you're suspended.
Well, the D. General Statute speaks to the value valuation. And then that has to be valued as a given value.
That's, what I'm saying, that's got to be written down somewhere.
It is.
I'm hearing two totally different opinions here, and I don't know, I mean, it's got to be a round answer, right?
I thi- I think where you get into trouble is when you start trying to submit evidence of values of the property that are values as well as a date other than the date that is prescribed by statutes that you're looking at. And, you know, I, I think a landowner is able to express his or her opinion as to the value of their property on that date. But I think if they try to express the value of that property in a different way than that particular date that's in issue in these devaluation bases, then I think that's where the property tax commission would have to come in.
Let me have two more comments. Last time I was up here, you all instructed somebody to come see me about this. I'm getting answers. I haven't seen you. And I'd like to talk to anybody in Chester about those cases, because I know about that case. And the reason that they decided that case was, because the tax manual set by the commission at that time didn't allow them to hear the other stuff. The statute allows the commission to give them instructions to say, "If you have an appraisal as of two thousand and fourteen, you can adjust it five percent or six percent up to two thousand and fifteen and consider that for whatever weight they get." So that's what you wrestle. Anyway, I'd like to talk to anybody about it. I don't agree with his opinion. It is a little bit of gray area, and I do feel that you want to do something with the taxpayer. With that Board of Equalization review, you must be kicked right out, since we're not going to give this. If you're going to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Nellman. I don't recall ever kicking nobody out from that law, if they wish it in my law. I mean, I said it's kind of that thing for you. Did we ever just kick anybody out at that hearing?
Never.
I've never. I've just said in my four years, didn't let it happen since. Anybody else that wants to speak to the proposed schedule banks? I'd be glad to hear. Not Chester or anybody. If there's nobody else that wants to speak to it, if you can fail this public hearing, I will declare the public hearing closed. Thank you for your input, your comments. Uh, the item four we have is a Making Multi Purpose Juvenile Home Lease Renewal, and our county manager is going to go ahead and add on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll notice in your agenda package, we do have lease agreement with Making County being a west shore in the state of North Carolina, being a west sea. This is, as you stated, for the Making Multi Purpose Juvenile Home, this is a lease renewal. It is the same lease that the county had the prior year. We've been housing this facility at nineteen fifty Lakeside Drive since two thousand and eight, when they reopened their doors. And basically, this lease agreement will continue that for a term of one year, beginning on the first day of June two thousand and fourteen, and ending on the thirty-first day of May twenty fifteen for one dollar.
We do need to be reminded that there is a option to renew for two additional years, so it's effectively like a, probably go be a free year at least instead of a one year on the lease. And, Mr. Mayor, can you review that and direct the date?
Yes, it's the exact, it's the lease that, the exact same lease that we're going to use.
Who calls that option? The, uh, State of North Carolina would, uh, decide whether or not there's an option for that.
This is the only one, this is the only facility west of Raleigh. And basically, what it does is, it keeps these, uh, youth dads from the topic that would otherwise be sent to the Department of Correction, gives them an opportunity through instruction and giving them some educational opportunities to improve and stay out of the correction system.
Hopefully, each of y'all got an opportunity to read the memorandum of Chuck Malaney, the, uh, Western Area Administrator. I think he, he's calling attention to, uh, what that particular program at that, to help the young people that are having some delinquency issues.
And I certainly encourage you, Sean, don't let anyone over to the home to break the law. You're all that are invisible, it's easy, and it isn't these young folks. And to know that it's all one west of Raleigh, just trying to change, keep these kids out there. And they have to be great success for the career. And, uh, so with that, which I'm going to make most of the two leases to.
We have a motion in the second by Commissioner Haven. Any discussion? Here you're not in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, as you can, so. Um, we do have, uh, a declaration of restricted covenants for Park Meadows deed. I think this is part of receiving, part of grant, uh, basically says we're not going to use it for anything other than recreation.
That is correct, and I actually have a draft document, a declaration of restricted covenants. In a nutshell, it's part and parcel of the, uh, part of grant, uh, application process as well as getting the monies that the party folks have agreed, provided to the county in connection with this particular project of Park Meadows. They require some very specific language to be attached to the deed, or as you recall, we actually closed when we were sure we were going to get a part of it. And as a consequence, that language is not put in the deed because, uh, there wasn't a guarantee that you could get that. Uh, there is now, uh, an actual agreement, a grant agreement signed, and, um, this language, in order to, again, receive it, but it has to be attached to the deed. And rather than, if the deed's already been made, it is going to be done by a declaration of restricted covenant. If I could hand to you a property of the, after the declaration, it is consistent with the language which is provided in the, um, agenda package.
And I'll just read that, says this property was acquired with state financial assistance from North Carolina Parks Recreation Trust Fund. In pursuit of a contractual requirement, this property may not be converted to other than public recreation use, whether by transfer, sale, or any other manner, without approval of North Carolina Parks and Environment and Natural Resources.
And I would recommend that this board, uh, approve the execution of the declaration of restricted covenants that I just provided to the, the sheriff and, and with the understanding that the actual execution would not occur until, um, we are, we had consulted with Luanne Bryan at Park, there had been some discussion about the timing of doing this. And I think it's appropriate to go ahead and authorize the execution of it, and, and authorize county manager to be attached to Luanne Bryan as to the precise timing of executing it.
Do we have a motion, or what did you say?
Some of them.
We have a motion in, uh, second. Commissioner Haven?
Well, we did say.
Any discussion? Here you're not in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, that motion passes. Don't any of the signees just?
Not at this time.
Not yet.
Stay tuned.
Let's see, Lori Hall has a resolution regarding interlocal contracts for cooperative purchasing. Lori?
As, as y'all will probably recall, uh, we recently, apparently we approved another one of the purchasing arrangements, as you, as you know, under General Statute one forty-three dash one forty-nine. Um, there is a requirement, um, that certain types of purchases by a county be put out in public bid. And as there is with every law, there are a number of exceptions. And one of the exceptions is if you have a, basically, a purchasing group, um, such as this KPN that we're referring to here, which is composed of local government-type bodies, um, that come together and put together a purchasing group. What they will do is they will solicit, uh, bids for particular types of things, and say, "Give us a bid, and when you get that, you need to understand you're not only providing that bid to us, but you are agreeing to make that particular audit available for purchase at this price by any member of this purchasing group." So in effect, what it does is it allows for there to be a, uh, an opportunity to get bids, and then, uh, anybody who's in that purchasing group can use that, that particular group to get. In this particular case, the county was looking at, um, purchasing a number of lights for the recreation of our park. And, uh, KPN, uh, which is actually a Keystone Purchasing Network, is actually, um, the brainchild of this school-type district of Pennsylvania known as the Central Sussler Hama, intermediate unit. And basically, they put this together, and they opened it up to local governments, state counties, municipalities across the country that have it, and, uh, North Carolina is purchasing to, to purchase. And so happens, Keystone Purchasing Network has the lighting which is needed for the Park Meadows project, and, uh, my understanding said that's determined at a very defensive purpose.
Yes.
So we want to utilize KPN in this project. But in order to do that, we've got to agree to be a member and abide by their rules. And that's what you have there, the resolution, approving membership application. And they'll see, and you can enter it, and you can.
Come and go.
So you can buy one thing.
Well, and actually, we, we buy from a company called BSN. We buy all our sporting equipment. Um, and BSN's also a member, not, not a lighting firm, which must go, but BSN is a member of this Keystone Purchasing Network also. And I had, uh, I, I gave them a list of things to quote, uh, what their real price was, and it's, it ended up being about a hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff. And they saved about twenty thousand dollars off of that hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff by going through this KPN.
The purpose is to, if you want personal lighting.
But I can use it from now on.
For anything.
Yes.
Once you're a member.
Once, once we're a member. Uh, I, it's basically calling and saying, "I'm a local government," or "I'm a member of," that, that, I'm sure they'll, they'll sign us a, a member number, and I'll, I'll have given, you know, what, what number of that, of that firm is. Kind of like having a Sam's card, so to speak. That, that's how they describe it to me, is it.
No, I, I think it's, it's one of those things that gives us difficult options, as you recall, we did.
You have to not through, but you can.
We don't. If you'll recall, we did one from, who was it, HDSC?
Yes.
Which was a, a, a purchasing group that was, you know, started in Galveston, Texas at the time. And we utilized that in connection with the, uh, the function of the trust.
Any other questions, or I would have any motion? Motion, my friend, to take, in a second. The second, my friend, any discussion? Here you're not in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, you get that, I take.
Actually, um, the lighting company that we, that gave us the, the best product, I was asking her, "I need to shave money off, I need to shave money off, I need to shave money off." And she contacted me outside, kind of, and said, "Hey, this, you need to look at, look into, doing it this way." And then once I said that, "If we go this route," ended up saving a substantial amount of money off of that. That, that's the cheapest way that we could get the lighting that we, that we want for this property.
The whole point of the purchasing group is to require a, uh, prompt.
Thank you. Uh, that was all the basis. I had an agenda, is any other basis to come before the board, before we, uh?
We do have a request for a, a close session, I think, for our manager.
Yes, sir.
No action.
Okay.
Close session for the purpose of attorney-client.
Attorney-client privilege is what our manager told me. He also, they anticipated no action, this was information. With that said, we have a motion to go into a close session.
So, just say.
Motion, uh, to, to have a discussion. I'll, there, say aye. Uh, we will make this announcement for the media and everybody else that's here. We will have a, uh, special meeting. I would guess we're going to adjourn this meeting over the ten o'clock here.
I, I think the, I think it'll be adjourned, I think the, the notice is already gone out for a special.
So we have a special call meeting, uh, Thursday, May the first, uh, two thousand and fourteen, which is, uh, day after tomorrow. Uh, and this is at the Cowie School at six thirty, this manager, believe you said that time?
Yes, sir.
The purpose is to hold a joint meeting in the town of Franklin and the town of Island.
Oh, there be. There be.
Not this time.
I, I don't know.
I mean, it's gotta be over the hound taking care of this.
Yes, there is, there have been a case.
School. And then Monday, I told me.
Monday, school, or no. And that's the people around the people, and Monday is in four o'clock.
Four o'clock. You guys have something, stick to job. I know you schedule better than me do.
Yeah. All right, we'll look. Close session.
If we like. I thought, I thought I heard.
Motion to adjourn, it takes.
My tape.
Right.
My tape adjourned.
I did.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Yeah.